I was gonna come down. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Livingston City Commission on December 3rd, 5:32 PM. I guess we will start with the roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Vice Chair Nitz.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Willich.
Here.
We'll start the evening off with general public comment. So this will be public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening or within the consent items listed at the top of the agenda. So again, general public comment for items not on the agenda or the consent items. I will remind folks that individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. Also, we do limit comments of four minutes. You all have four minutes to make your comment. We'll start with folks in the room. Would anyone like to make public comment in the room? If so, come on up to the podium. We'll ask for your name and your address. Being none in the room, we'll go ahead and go online. Is there anyone online that would like to make general public comment this evening? Feel free to come off mute and say your name or raise your hand. One more time, anyone for general public comment? Being none, I will go ahead and close general public comment for the evening. And we will move on to consent items. Commissioners, would anyone like anything pulled this evening?
I'd like to pull D, please.
D, got it. I'm called D. Anything else? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion for A through C and Eena?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
I have a motion by Lyons. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Schwartz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Commissioner Willich, Consent Item D.
Yeah, on page 59, the heading Strategic Alignment, the narrative under that appears to be the prompt for what you put in that heading. And all of the others that we usually go through have something how to do this sheet and then et cetera, et cetera, and how to lines. I'd just like to see that come up to compliance with what we have, if possible, please.
Mr. Gager.
Absolutely apologize for the oversight. And I guess just to be clear to the community, really, the strategic alignment of this contract is providing our wastewater treatment facility, water reclamation facility, the specialized staff support that they need in doing so on a contract basis is more cost effective due to the limited use of the resource than having a full-time employee.
Sure, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other comments, Andy? Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve consent item D.
A motion by Willich. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no proclamations this evening and no scheduled public comments. So I'll move on to action items. Action item A, Presentation of City of Livingston Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for financial year ending June 30th, 2024. Mr. Gager.
Thank you Chair Kale for this item. I would welcome not only our Finance Director, Peter Federhoff, but probably more importantly, our Auditor, Morgan. And I will allow Morgan to present the results of the audit and Director Federhoff, and I will stand for any questions the commission may have. So Morgan, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you. So Morgan Scar, I'm with the Maddox CPA Group, presenting your fiscal year 2024 audit. So there's two reports that we issue as part of this 184-page annual comprehensive financial report. So I'll talk about those two and highlight a couple other items and then happy to address any questions or you know, work with Finance Department depending on what the questions are. So I see you're pulling them up. In a big packet, okay. I think he's gonna work his way to the, to the audit report. So in an audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards, we are first and foremost tasked with performing our audit to give you an opinion on your financial statements themselves. I'm just, I can see what he's pulling through here, but I'll just talk anyway. So this, our, our report on the basic financial statements is three pages long, starts on page 2-1. It starts out with the opinion section. I want to guess keep going, get to it here, a couple pages out. Oh. Is just the governance letter in there page maybe?
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
There you go. Thank you. Apologize for the delay.
Oh, there she is. Okay, yeah, it's gonna be in its own attachment, I'm sure.
Give us just a minute, Morgan. We're just bringing it up.
I'm also happy to screen share depending, just you tell me what's easier. I assume, I'm sure that's easier.
So 2-. 181?
Yep.
Well, sorry, page 13 is the first one.
13, okay.
13 of the PDF, I suppose.
Great.
Okay.
Morgan, please take it away while I.
Okay. That's perfect. All right. So the first one is our independent auditors report. So this is the crux of what you're looking for here. So we're giving you an opinion on your basic financial statements, but it's not that simple under government standards ever. So the first section there, our opinion is clean. So unmodified is the language on that. But what it really means is, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position and changes in the activity for each opinion unit. It goes on to describe the opinion units because our opinions have to cover your entity-wide statements, which are your full accrual statements presenting all your fixed assets, all your debt, all sorts of stuff, as well as each major fund, and then the aggregate remaining fund information. I think that's, it's meant to sort of provide a context here because we're not really giving you an opinion on every single fund individually, just the major funds and then the rest of them in aggregate. It talks about, the rest of this report really talks about the other components of this annual comprehensive financial report package and what assurance, if any, we're giving on some of those because some of them are required to be presented based on government accounting standards and we don't give an opinion on them. And then there's other pieces that we give in relation to opinion, meaning we believe they're fairly stated in relation to the basic financial statements. The final section, if you keep going down to the last page of this. Thank you. Talks a little bit about the other report required by government auditing standards, which is the other one that we'll talk about. You could jump there while we're editing. It's page 181 in the reporting packet. I would just say in context too here, what follows that audit report is Management's Discussion and Analysis section. And this is the section that if you are not going to read the full 184 pages of the financial report, that's the section that puts the fiscal year 24 financials in more context. It talks about some prior year comparisons, financial analysis of some of the more significant funds and activity. And so that's maybe six pages long and that is the one place that it's not just a single year presentation, but gives you some context and puts in a little more, little more detail. So that second report that you have pulled up there, this is our report on internal control and compliance. So in part of performing an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we are required to do some testing on your system of internal controls and compliance with applicable laws and regulations. So a lot of this is just definitions. It defines what a deficiency in internal control would be. Talks about the different levels of those. And then this year, that report goes on to say that we didn't find any deficiencies in internal control that needed to be reported here. The second page of this report talks about compliance. And as part of obtaining assurance on the financial statements, we perform tests of compliance with applicable like laws or regulations. So there is one instance of non-compliance that we reported if you go down to the next page. Montana Code annotated requires specific testing around funds that include charges for services revenue. The idea being that the city may not maintain, that any city may not maintain a cash balance in one of those funds that is greater than twice the fund's appropriations. Or if they do, the idea would be that the city is supposed to reduce its charge for services in that fund. For Livingston, the Impact Fees Fund is in that position. But that's because you're accumulating funds for a future project that's been identified. It's not just overcharging, which is what they're really trying to get at, is if you're charging charges for services in excess of what you need for operations, they want you, they, Montana Code wants you to reduce your charges, but because you're accumulating them toward a specific purpose, you're still out of compliance with that Montana Code section, but your explanation then is included there in the response section and I mean, that's really all you can do with that, but it seems to make sense. I think that the idea, I don't think the Montana Code really takes that into account, you know, if you're really accumulating it for a specific purpose. So I did want to point out, there is no report on compliance related to federal awards and no schedule of expenditure of federal awards like there was last year because the city didn't have expenditures of federal awards over the single audit threshold, which was 750,000 for this past year. So that you didn't have to have a single audit this year. So that's not included in here, which makes it, you know, slightly shorter than it was last year. I do want to say thank you for the opportunity to do this work and really thank you to Paige and your entire finance department. A lot of, I mean, you know, we have a couple of reports in here and then the rest of this is assembled by your finance department and an enormous amount of work goes into that. And they're really diligent about it and making sure that this is a timely and effective process. And so I think that's worth, worth noting.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you.
And I would say as a former finance director myself, I would reiterate those, that last bit there is a tremendous amount of work to put together an audit. And so I thank the director and her staff and Morgan and her staff as well. And with that, the director and I will stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gager, and thank you, Morgan. Commissioner, any questions for Morgan or finance department or Mr. Gager?
Just my compliments to the job well done. Paige, yes. And that's all I have.
Thank you for your hard work in getting us done and keeping us on compliance throughout the year. So thank you very much for that. I know it's all work. All right. So with that, let's go ahead and open this up, actually. So let's, I would entertain a motion, entertain a motion, and then we can have enough public comment.
I'll move to accept fiscal year 24 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
I have a motion by Willich. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lyons. Okay, so we'll open this up to public comment. Anyone in the room like to make public comment on the FY24 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report? I don't see anyone in the room. Anyone online? Would anyone online like to make a public comment? You can feel free to come off mute and ask your name. One more time, any public comment? Being none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, discussion or deliberation?
I'm super happy to hear that we are compliant on all regards. It's what it sounds like, minus the one thing that is sort of compliant. It's kind of it. So no, I think it's actually making me very happy to hear.
Mr. Lanson?
You know, this is out of normal order, but I'm curious about if we have any concerns about that issue. I feel like it was well explained as to why we're in that position, but do we have any exposure liability based upon that position of non-compliance?
So I have in other jurisdictions seen certain taxpayer rights advocates groups that would come forward and make an issue of something like this. That said, I think within Livingston, we all understand that the railroad crossing is an important project. And so, you know, the silver lining I find and I, I do regret that there are any findings in our audit, but the silver lining I see in that is that we're actually taking steps to try to address a known community need over the last several decades. So there is certainly some, some possible legal risk there, but as, as the auditor said, I think this one appears a bit defensive.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nothing?
Question? Nothing? Okay. I don't have anything either. So, thank you. And roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
Or.
Vice Chair Nitz.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Commissioner Willich.
Or.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to action item B, Presentation of Stormwater Utility Feasibility Study. Mr. Gager.
Thank you Chair Kale. The item before you is a follow-up on a conversation that started about six months after I got here regarding stormwater control. As I believe many of you know that when the city of Livingston achieves first-class status and hits 10,000 in population, then we are under certain statutory requirements to treat and deal with our stormwater before, before discharging it into, into waterways. And so since that conversation in April 2023, staff and myself have, have worked on the issue in the background. And we were very fortunate enough, you might recall, actually, a little over a year ago, we signed a data sharing agreement with Headwaters Economics related to some flood data. And that data sharing kind of turned into some larger conversations that resulted in Headwaters Economics very, very generously identifying some grant funding that would help the city continue its stormwater utility work or evaluation. And so the report that is getting presented tonight by AE2S, a different section of AE2S than we earlier contracted with, actually comes at no cost to Livingston taxpayers. And so I am eternally grateful to the sort of Headwaters Economics and their entire team. And also to AE2S who helped us, you know, kind of advance this analysis on behalf of the, the commission. So I guess with that, I would turn it over to the team and specifically Kayla and Jacob, I believe. And our public secretary.
Welcome.
I apologize. I want to get a few words in ed-byes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm very excited to continue our stormwater discussions. This is nine years in the making for me. 2015. I made it a priority to invest in researching our stormwater system and modeling it. So we have a true understanding of what we actually have, what its capacity is. And that evolved into really in 2020, providing a presentation to not only the city commission, members of the public, but to doing kind of lunch and learns with some outside interest groups and members of the public. And we titled that Stormwater, the Forgotten Utility. Next phase in 2021, we graciously received a Montana Coal Endowment Planning Grant for a stormwater PER, which our preliminary engineering report, which identified over nine and a half million dollars worth of work we need to do on our town. And that continued on with this stormwater feasibility study. So it's been an absolute pleasure working with Bridgette and Chris and Kayla and Jacob. What a wonderful team. And I look forward to working with them into the future. But as we all know, we have a lot of challenges in Livingston. First of all, there's never been a utility. And what we have from a utility is, was put in the early 1900s. It's out past its, it's lived past its useful life. It's undersized. Hence, anytime we have a 25-year storm event, we have water in our underpass. You know, we have one connection for stormwater from the north side to the south side. And that's in the underpass that was put in in the early 1900s. I think something that's very passionate to all of us is just all of our stormwater ends up in the Yellowstone River. Via either Fleishman Creek, Bowman Creek, or even the Livingston Ditch. So our community really stood up back in 2015 and we, we invested a lot of money in a wastewater treatment facility that puts very quality, high-quality effluent into the Yellowstone. Stormwater shouldn't be any different. So and I know people in Livingston are passionate about the river and its quality. And then lastly, what Grant alluded to, I think, I appreciate Livingston being proactive. We all know we're a growing community and we want to stay out ahead of the MS4 requirements when we hit a 10,000 population. So Kayla's gonna take it over and really go over the nuts and bolts of the feasibility study. And then we'll talk about, a little bit about steps forward from the feasibility study and then have some Q and A at the end. So, thank you.
Good evening, Chair O'Bannon and Commissioners. My name is Kayla Maronson with AE2S. As Grant alluded to, so we are under the AE2S umbrella. We have worked with you guys on a number of projects in the past. I specifically work on the Nexus team, which is really our funding and financial branch of AE2S. So our engineers are pretty good at identifying needs for communities and we come in to help them pay for costs associated with the product. It says, you know, things can get expensive quickly. Also with me tonight is Jacob Strongback. Jacob is our Nexus Practice Leader. So he's gonna present a few slides after me and then he'll also be available to answer any questions. So, on with that, Grant, is there anything we could pull up to?
While he's doing that, just wanted to start with a few open comments here. I guess first and foremost, just wanted to say thank you guys for the time this evening. It has been absolutely wonderful working with Grant, Shannon, and the Headwaters team on this project. It's a really exciting time for you guys that you've done so much work to get to this point. And this is really just the next step of stepping this path forward. What we're gonna present to you tonight is feasibility level, meaning no decisions are being made. There's a lot of options still on the table. But this is really just our attempt to get our arms around the financial funding side of the equation. Hopefully you guys are doing okay. You've already seen a lot of financial information tonight. This is gonna be more of it, although we'll try to keep it interesting. We have about 15 slides prepared and then we're gonna have a Q and A discussion piece afterwards. So, that's some good.
Yeah.
Perfect. So this was Shannon's slides. We can move on to the next. Perfect, thank you. So just to give you guys a little bit of roadmap and what we're gonna talk about tonight. So a couple of objectives. So the first is we're gonna talk through some of your current financial challenges as they relate to your stormwater system. Shannon did a great job kind of summarizing it at a pretty high level. You guys have a lot of needs from water quality to infrastructure to capacity, et cetera. And we're gonna talk through some of the objectives we started to try to achieve. We'll talk about some of our initial findings. Then we're gonna lay out kind of some next step recommendations for you guys to chew on it and eventually make a decision if you want to proceed or not. It's fair. So the current financial challenge, I don't think this is probably a surprise to any of you all, but as of right now, you guys don't have a dedicated revenue source or stormwater services, not its operations and projects. What that means is Shannon is having to look to his other funds to pay for proactive, or sorry, reactive work. So as issues arise, he's having to kind of find money in the wastewater budget as well as street's budget. Not uncommon across our, you know, the folks that we work with, we're folks who haven't really got their heads around stormwater utility yet. But that money could be being spent on those more appropriate activities where this would allow you to do actual stormwater-centric work and pay for it with stormwater money. What that results in is a lot of reactive operations. So you're not actually going to unproactively be maintaining your system. You're oftentimes having reactive issues that are occurring and that can present challenges when, especially when it comes to flooding and intense rain events or snow melt events. And as Shannon already mentioned, you guys have a lot of system needs. TD and H has done a lot of technical work on actual infrastructure. They've identified, you know, close to $10 million for the projects on the radar. You know, after talks with Shannon, there's a lot of deferred maintenance in your system. And what we mean by that is it's just pipes that are full of gunk that have never really been maintained or cleaned out. And those can present clogging issues and water quality challenges. There's a desire to do more for water quality. Shannon's already done some work. There's a lot of opportunity to clean up stormwater as it goes before it goes in the Yellowstone or Fleishman Creek to help trail populations. And then there's these future regulations that have been tougher a few times already tonight. So we'll kind of leave it at that. So what we're really talking about here tonight is this concept of a stormwater utility and just a couple of basics about stormwater utilities. First and foremost, it's a basis to charge for municipal services. So as I mentioned, right now, the services you're providing from a stormwater standpoint are being paid for by other funds. This would allow you a dedicated source of revenue to go and do stormwater-related work every day. This is a pretty common thing to do across the country. We're seeing more stormwater utilities, especially with the bigger cities. Smaller communities are kind of taking notice and saying, hey, this is a way we could get a lot more done in our communities and increase our levels of service. So again, these are common in Montana. The big seven all have some version of a stormwater utility and there are smaller communities who are also looking at this in Montana, kind of in this southwest Montana region specifically. And then if, when you kind of take a step back and look at nationally, there's, these are very common ways to fund string and work across the country. And then the last bullet here, and this is a really important one, is community education outreach is required when you're talking about a stormwater utility because this is often a very new concept and people don't really understand what you're trying to achieve. And so just want to make sure we, we hit that point. And I know you guys have done a ton of work already, but that's a really important element of this, just to continue, you could bring the community along for the ride and make sure they understand what you guys are trying to achieve. So thanks, Grant. So what did the feasibility study intend to achieve? So what we did is we said, first, we're gonna talk with Shannon and Grant, figure out what would it cost per year to operate a stormwater utility? What are those things that he wants to try to achieve? And how much is that gonna cost? And that's called a revenue requirement, which we'll talk a little more on the next slide. And the next objective was to review a number of ways to pay for those costs. And when it comes to stormwater utilities, there's a lot of ways communities try to pay for stormwater services. And so Jacob will be talking more about those options here in a few slides. The next was to estimate the community impacts and say, what is this gonna do from a rate standpoint for different user classes? And those usual classes are single-family residential, commercial, local, and they're kind of the big three. Then the final objective was to develop enough steps. And I just wanted to note, there is a report that we we wrote and it was included in our package. So if you guys haven't had a chance to read this report, I definitely encourage you to do so. It's intentionally draft form and the ideas that after this conversation will work to finalize it based on our recommendations and feedback we received tonight. So I just want to make sure the public and you are aware of that. So when we talk about the expense side of the equation, really, when you talk about an enterprise fund, there's two different pieces. There's the expense side and the revenues, or sorry, and the revenue side. It's expenses, what, what you spend money on and the revenue side is how you collect the money to pay for those costs. So on the expense side of the equation, what we, we came up with after working with Shannon and Grant is your first year revenue requirement is about $564,000. And so what you could consider that is that's your budget. That's how much you're trying to raise every year in order to do the work that you're trying to accomplish. And so to dig into that a little bit further, there's really four buckets. When you think about a stormwater utility, that kind of feeds into that overall revenue requirement. And they're broken out on your screen, but the first one is operations and maintenance. So that's really dedicated to paying for the people, the parts, the equipment, the energy costs, the office space, the computers. It's really the nuts and bolts of your utility, just keeping the lights on and keeping people working every day, cleaning up the system, making sure the system's operational. The second piece is capital. In most cases, we see capital tends to like drive revenue requirements for enterprise ones because capital projects, as you guys are sure of, are expensive. Pipes are expensive. Treatment systems are expensive. So in your case, we put together the list of projects that Shannon gave us from the TD Nature Report. We started thinking, okay, how could you guys strategically get these projects done over a set time period? The next would be an inter-fund transfer. What's, what that item is, is basically taking a percentage of the money erased through the, the rate structure and you transfer that to your general fund to pay for services that are assisting this stormwater utility. So those, those could be legal costs, those could be HR, those could be upper management, et cetera. And then finally, the last item here is operating reserves. Operating reserve is basically taking some money, putting it aside and saying, we're gonna save that for rainy day. And if something happens, we're gonna go and draw from that money. And we'll get into a little bit more specifics on what each of those include, but you can see how those numbers then add up to become your revenue requirement for the year. So about $220,000 for O and M, 222 for capital projects, $11,000 for inter-fund transfer, and then $110,000 for operating reserve for the first year. This is basically an annual amount. And so this has been repeated year after year. So a few of the budget highlights that we put together here. So to get at the operations and maintenance revenue requirement, what we did is we looked at your wastewater fund as it sits today. We basically took all the line and line items and we kind of did a modification of each line item and adjusted based on the size of your system. So your stormwater system is a lot smaller than your wastewater system. Based on the size of your system, so your stormwater system is a lot smaller than your wastewater system, so we took the ratio of that to kind of come up with some numbers. And then we truth those with Shannon to make sure that everything looked right. In some cases, there were some line item modifications, but at the end of the day, what it resulted in is. One one full-time employee for O N M, so that would be basically be adding a full-time staff member to work on stormwater dedicated services every day of the week, um, working day of the year. Um, that would be acquiring equipment. Um, we're strategic with the equipment. Um, given that equipment can be quite expensive, so the thought here is that they would split with uh the wastewater and streets funds. Upper portion amount based on the usage of that equipment, and that would include a vacuum and a sweeper system. Um, and then it was an assortment of tools, parts and supplies, stuff that people just need to have around to get their job done every day. Um, on the capital project side, so what we did is we took the long list of products that TD and H put together. And we whittled that down to what do we want to try to get done in the first five years, and so that's the list of projects. Um, that that Shannon kind of prioritized and said, we really wanna try to make progress on these over the next five years. Um, they include water quality projects, so helping the Yellowstone River in addition to um installing some new infrastructure and replacing some existing infrastructure that's undersizing or functioning correctly. Shannon, do you want to say anything?
I guess I would, I would just say that there was a lot of thought put in this and we we certainly. Are very aware of creating a new utility and what that financial burden is to our residents. So this is, this is a pretty lean and mean uh operating and capital budget. But but if if we have this, I'm comfortable that with Ryan and his team and utilizing equipment we already have, um, we can make it work.
Um, and then the last two, just to round out this list here, the general fund transfer was five percent of the operating budget, which is is pretty standard, and that was a recommendation that Grant had made, as well as. Um, reserves and savings is about a six month out. Well, typically that can range from like three to six months. But we figured since it's the first year, you guys wanna kind of get your feet under you, that building, that reserve makes sense, because there's gonna be costs that you don't see right now, so. Um, and we thought it'd be helpful just for for you all, as well as the public listening, is just to compare kind of where we're sitting at from a revenue requirement standpoint versus the water and sewer funds. What that looks like from a typical rate standpoint. Um, so you can see stormwater. Um, you can see stormwater at kind of that.
Jiggle the wire, go jiggle and wire.
Uh, stormwater sits right at that, you know, point six million dollars per year where your water fund is generating about two point two million a year, and then your sewer is three, three million a year. So um, it's 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 less, it's about, you know, a quarter of your water fund. Um, but we are very conscious of the fact that all of these funds are kind of balancing on community affordability, which you can't, I don't know if folks can see on the screen with the headings there. But it says community affordability under that um, that balancing point. And the the concept there is that, you know, understanding you guys have big decisions to make as far as um rates you're setting for the community, that the stormwater certainly has to be kind of in that that realm and nexus. Um, and then from a typical rate standpoint, Jacob's gonna talk, you know, for a couple of slides about how we got to that nine dollar a month. But we just want to kind of show how the rate that we came up with for you guys compares to other ones. Um, so with that, I'm gonna turn over to Jacob, and he's gonna talk to the rate method portion of the conversation. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone. Um, given the opportunity to to be here and be a part of this project. Um, for this study, there's quite a bit more detail in the report, but we. We're looking, we looked at a variety of different ways to establish a stormwater rate for your community. The chart up here on the right is kind of showing different methods on the top, or some of the more. Simplistic, but less maybe less accurate or fair approaches all the way to the bottom, which become. Very accurate, where you're looking at individual parcels, understanding how they contribute to the stormwater system. The challenge there was a lot of data, a lot of upkeep. So we found a lot of success in communities trying to establish rate structures kind of in that middle ground. So the two, the three we really looked at, we did look at a flat rate one and send the report for comparison, but. We really felt the impervious surface based met methods are the way to go. And what that would involve is understanding how much impervious surface, that's the paving, the building footprints, how much of that is on the property. And that directly correlates to runoff of a property during a storm event. There's a very proven approach to doing stormwater utility rates. And then our intention would be then, from a residential perspective, that would be set at more of a flat rate. That's, there's a lot of different ways to do that. I know we could talk for a long time, and if there's questions on the different rate structures, we can jump into that um at the end. But I really wanna focus on this impervious rate structure on the next slide to kind of how we came about the math. So the idea is taking that five hundred and sixty four thousand dollars of revenue requirements. And we spread it out across your entire community is impervious surface. The impervious surface layers um for your Livingston one, perfect, we had to make some estimations, so one of the next steps would be within the redefining that data. But we we managed, we looked at sample properties, we came up with an estimated rate and established that on what is. What does a property have to pay per unit of impervious surface? And on average, the two rates are shown there for residential property that equates to about nine to ten dollars. And for commercial, we're looking at eighteen to nineteen dollars per month. So not a huge, not a huge amount, but it is, it is, it is a number, and we're trying to do the best we can. Um, a few things to point out, we would do a flat rate for residential. The commercial properties would scale with the size of the property, so if you had a large. Property, they would pay more, especially if they have a greater impervious surface, they contribute more stormwater runoff. And then part of the process going forward is making sure we set up a method that's sustainable. We wanna make sure the method approach is adaptable year over year and something that the city can maintain and use. We really felt this was a nice balance of enough data to drive fairness. But not over overly burning the data, so not making it too complicated to explain. That's kind of the approach we're recommending in the report. To put that in context with other communities in Montana and around the region, this is a graphic. At H two S, we conduct an annual rate survey with a lot of the clients we work with to try to show how everybody compares. So generally, at a nine dollar a month residential fee, that would put you right in the middle of the folks in our in our study that contribute to our database. And you can see the ones in blue are the other communities around Montana. As Kayla mentioned, the big seven, you're kind of right in the middle of all of those. Diving into that more on commercial properties. Again, the rate there, what they actually pay would scale the size of the property, so these are some quick example properties. If you had a smaller property, this could be, you know, restaurant, small shop, something um that had about five thousand square foot in previous area. That bill would be between twenty and thirty a month. All the way to the larger footprints, these are sort of your grocery store, box store type things, that would be about one hundred and ninety to two hundred dollars per month. And these, as we refine, these numbers will change a bit, but this is really, this is getting us close to the ballpark to to discuss. The other main takeaways, I wanted to mention kind of the conclusion of the study, and then we'll turn it back over to Kayla for some wrap ups. But with this rate structure, it is sufficient to generate the the initial revenue requirement of five hundred and sixteen thousand or so. The rates are on track with similar commu- communities. We did run across some data limitations that we have a plan and we'll work through that, and if we continue with this project, we'll be, we have a plan to address those data limitations. And then in that process, there's also some policy things that definitely come up with, how do you handle? Properties that don't have this utility bill today? Do you want to explore credit exemption policies if somebody does a big improvement to minimize stormwater runoff? How do we handle that? And then ultimately, there's also questions around billing mechanisms, do you tie it to utility bills, you tie it to property taxes? Those are all things that we'll get to in the future phase if we continue. But our study does kind of recommend from our experience, those are key decisions that have to be made through the process. Yeah, we want to wrap it up.
Okay, thanks, Jacob. Um, so as far as recommended next steps, um, we listed a few here. There are more in the the report, um, kind of the last section, but kind of the key items here. Um, so we really hope to finalize your report based on the feedback that we hear tonight from you all, so we're looking forward to a a Q and A session with you all. Um, we, I guess, as the next step, if the decision was to move forward, and we did put a roadmap at the bottom of the screen, and that's intentional, because. What we are, you know, talking about tonight is is really item number one is the feasibility study. Prior to that, as as Shannon mentioned, you know, this has been in the works for a long time, close to a decade, but. You know, zooming into kind of where we are today, so there's the feasibility study, there's there's you guys kind of right on the road. There's an off-ramp, right, and there may be a decision point where you say we actually don't want to move forward as a community, or we decide we do. If you were to move forward, this next step, we'd recommend is what we would consider be a development plan. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about that on the last slide here to show you kind of what a development plan would include. Um, but then once that development plan was done, it would address a lot of the items that Jacob had mentioned, really get a lot more detailed with some of our analysis, collect better data. Um, you then move into the implementation stage. Um, we think that development plan phase could last anywhere from six to nine months. Um, and there are some quite, there are some recommendations and ideas from Headwaters about potential grant funding. That Grant's gonna conclude, so we'll then talk a little bit more about, that could help pay for a portion for all that next step process. Um, we got a little side, so then as far as what that plan would include, this is just a real high level overview of some of the things that that would happen during that stage. Um, so finalize the implementation steps, um, we would fill the data gaps and and work on setting the final rates, the structure, as well as the amounts. Um, establish methodology for ongoing upkeep, that's that update process. A lot of that, especially with impervious area, involves GIS, so there'd be some coordination with the county, I imagine, given that you guys don't have in-house GIS. Um, and then you'd have to kind of work through some key policy questions that would be presented, that Jacob already mentioned. Then the final step here is developing label framework allowances. And then with kind of in all this and and kind of above and beyond, it's continuing to engage with your community, both your business and your residential community, making sure that they know. Um, kind of the work that you guys are doing and getting their thoughts along the way as well, so. Um, those have become our key recommendations, so. Um, with that, our presentation is done. I'll turn it back to Grant, and then we'll be able to look at questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla and Jacob. I really appreciate it, and Commissioners, as Kayla kind of pointed out there towards the end. Um, the. The team from Headwaters Economics, uh, you know, has identified some uh potential grant opportunities to. You know, continue along the path that if the commission would would like to continue to pursue this initiative. Um, uh, the the city's policy analyst and I have um reviewed that grant opportunity over the last few weeks. Incidentally, it was pointed out to us by a number of folks in the community who were interested in in stormwater work. So um, if it uh, if it is uh the direction of the commission, um, you know, I I think we would work with. Headwaters to to try to pursue that grant opportunity if if this is something that pleases the commission. So uh, with that, I will uh, and the team uh will stand for any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Commissioners, questions?
Um, are we doing clarifying right now, or there's no action?
There's no, there's no action tonight, just to correct Mr. Gager, you're not looking for action, but just some thoughts and direction, I guess. So that's what you're looking for this evening.
Yeah, I I certainly do uh appreciate any direction that the the commission may have. Um, we do have, I did include a a recommended motion um to receive and file the stormwater feasibility study. And, you know, a second part, if the commission wishes to direct um the city manager to pursue the recommendations in the study if they so uh desire. Um, that said, you know, I'm happy to take informal direction if uh if a motion is not uh on the table this evening.
No, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I I would suggest that we move, you know, move to accept and open a public comment. And then we can make our comments. I don't see any due to go through clarifying process. Because it's gonna be clarifying no matter what, we're gonna be asking for clarifying questions anyway, so. With common, I guess.
Oh, ask others have thoughts on the way that we perceive Mr. or Mr. Lyons, sorry.
Um. The the proposed motion says to pursue the recommendations in the study. Um. On page one eighty one, on the uh, it's on that last slide, are those the recommendations? That. Um, proposed motions referring to, so finalize report based on feedback. Continue community engagement, pursue a development plan, and acquire funding to next step.
Ah, yes, sir.
Um, and then. Caleb shared a little bit about what a development plan would entail, but I think that might be helpful. I'd I'd like maybe a little bit more information on what that is and how that's different from what we were just hearing, so. Um. Direct that to you.
Absolutely.
Then you can do what you want, I think.
So I guess we're doing clarifying.
We're into clarifying.
Okay.
I think, I think some folks need some additional information. Yeah, okay, yeah.
That works, so, so to answer that question, that was that last slide, and. With the feasibility level, we were identifying what the global revenue requirement's gonna be, looking at different rate structures, which we kind of came to a conclusion of what would be the best recommended. The next step is really getting you from there to the go-live, where we're actually billing your customers. And the process is, it's gonna be some data cleanup, because we recognize the deficiency in the impervious layer. Data cleanup. Then we wanna make sure as we develop the overall rate structure, we have a plan to maintain it, so. We know that you're gonna, every year, there's gonna be rate increases, you're gonna make changes, so making sure that formalizes that structure is happening. There's also going to be the ordinances and legal framework to make sure that through your, through your code process, we have established the the basis of it. Rate resolutions, those sort of things will happen late in the, late in the process. And ultimately, the big one is working with your billing system to make sure we can send the bills out to customers, or working with the county to put them in property tax. So it's really kind of working through that process. That wasn't at the high level, you know, in the great first study here, we were just identifying what is that? Overall need, what's it look like? And the next part is all about getting it to the finish line to actually start raising the revenue to do the projects.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons, you still have the floor?
Oh, you. No, thank you. That's all.
Other clarifying questions?
I have so many.
I can.
No shock, whole works, right?
Well, but yeah, that's why I thought, you know, this whole thing is basically. Clarifying, you know, all my questions, you know.
So, do I have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Um, so I wanted to ask first, who made the presentation? Was this Nexus?
Uh, yes, um, Kayla and Jacob are from A two S Nexus.
I wanna share with you that in six years on the commission and seeing lots of really big presentation on big projects, I think this was the nicest presentation to simplify. Like of all the presentations, since I've been on the commission. Of like simplifying a really big complex idea into something um. That like regular folks could understand that aren't super public workner, public works nerds. That like follow these things, so thank you. I think it's really, really well communicated.
Yeah, definitely team effort with everybody.
It's really good. Um, and Shannon knows I watch all those closely, so that's. I mean that when I say it's a really nice presentation. I wanted to ask you, though, I'm curious about. The operation and maintenance total that you came up with, so it was two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. But some of them were like capital expenses, it wasn't all staffing expenses, so would you just wanna budget that? Every year, can you share a little bit more about that number and why? That amount, even though some of our one-time expenses?
Yeah, I, yeah. I think I'll maybe start, then Shannon can jump in. So let me just go back to that slide really quick, because it's a really good question.
Yes, I appreciate this with staffing and.
That's on page one forty seven.
So one of the biggest, it's a really, really good question. So one of the big assumptions there is that you would be um, you would be borrowing for the payment purchases. So that would be a recurring expense for a period of years.
Okay, thank you.
The more fixed cost of the personnel, um, you know, just energy costs, right, being for internet service and and heating the buildings, things like that, so.
But when you calculate that number, you're. Planning for future expenses that we need to be saving, setting money aside for, so that it's just. Yeah, like it's a, okay, that's great, that I, that's fantastic, thank you. Um. That, okay, that's actually. Makes me feel happy. That's like good for expensive equipment, so thanks.
And then I think that the capital side of it is more of the the one-time project expenses. Now, you can fund a cap for project a lot of different ways.
Clarifying language, yes.
Yeah, you can do a cash fund, which is really the assumption that we're using here. But you could go to state or S F and and get a loan and then pay for those costs over time, twenty, thirty years.
The word capital, thank you, thank you. And then um. There was like a table on page one forty nine of projects. Is a map something that could be included potentially of where these projects are? Around town?
So one of the things that we did with our studies, we were basically referencing the work that TD and H did, so there's a very large, a couple of very large engineering documents that have that information. But I could definitely see value in the next kind of state of this, speaking of community centric map, that people go in and and see where these products are happening.
Something that's communicated like consistent with the rest of their work, where it's. Um, digestible by the average citizen, got reading like a seven hundred page document.
It's a very good idea.
Thank you, that would be fantastic. Um. So I think there would be, this is something that like residents actually pay attention to, I think, like. These, I think there's a lot of people that are invested, like Mr. Gager was saying, I'm not surprised that the public is. Following grants for stormwater. And Livingston, um, I'm interested, and maybe this is. Information that will be coming, um, the projects that you listed, how the timeline of the projects work with the EQ compliance requirements?
Um, so.
Like, how does that work to make sure that we're like in compliance, because then it's really expensive to be out of compliance with the.
Are you referring to the MS four permit requirement?
Yeah.
So delicious. Technically, at this time, you guys are not a permitted entity. So delicious. Technically, at this time, you guys are not a permitted entity, so you're not subject to that. The 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 MS four permit is largely based on programmatic. BMPs, they're called best management practice. So that includes inspection, supply construction sites. That includes regulating developments. So subdivisions come in, making sure that they're playing in retention detention ponds. There's community origin education criteria in there. So a lot of the work that the MS four permit requires is actually just going out and talking with the community, doing inspections, having enforcement plans. As of now, they don't actually require you to do capital projects necessarily, but there is a water quality component where you have to sample, assess, and then kind of circle back and do products and improve your water quality over time. But that's an entirely different project where once you become permitted, you look at what they give you from a regulation standpoint, and you create a stormwater management plan, which then would include those projects and kind of base things off of it. So right now, you guys are being proactive, which Shannon mentioned, but the reality there is until you get that MS four permit in hand and know exactly what they're going to declare, it's really hard to say what exactly is going to have to be done. So.
Thank you. That's really helpful. So we're on track, basically, is what I'm hearing, if we're.
Yeah, I think what the P E R identified, those are a lot of pipe and system needs that need to be addressed. And those are going to be more for conveyance and just getting water off streets during flooding events, right, and making sure that the community can continue to use roads and you don't have flooding into businesses and properties. So. That, I think, is the majority of those products. But Shannon does have a few water quality products listed on there, too, just to be good stewards of the.
Okay, thank you. That's.
Yeah, I'm just gonna just point out that the B and second street projects are really, you know, those are already established systems. So B Street starts at the underpass and
Right.
And Second Street is basically that Second Street and Geiser corridor. We'd be putting a storm scepter in to separate the sand oil grids before it's discharged in the Fleishman Creek.
Thank you. Can I keep going or did you?
I I just wondered if Mr. Gager might have wanted to.
You know, by by Sharon's, I heard another part of your question, it was perhaps seemingly unaddressed, it seemed to refer to timing of improvements and timing of the MS four. And under Montana Code annotated, that is timed to the census at which a city reaches ten thousand. And so we generally expect that that is likely to happen to us in twenty thirty at the next census.
Okay. Thank you. I'm kind of going not totally in order, except questions from when I read the packet and questions from the presentation. So. I am curious. This is all sort of about the rates, the equitable rates. I am really, I was really happy to see that equity is being considered in rates and calculating rates. So thank you. That's very meaningful, particularly as a community that we have like a rural spectrum of people across like the socio, not socioeconomic spectrum in Livingston. So thank you. I'm interested in hearing more about that calculation. I'm also interested in hearing how impervious is defined, since zero escaping is something that we're talking about, and I think there's different absorption rates of zero escaped. Right, habitats versus like lawns versus paved areas. And also, if elevation is can taken, taken into consideration. I live in a particular part of town where people are impacted by the stormwater runoff just within a few blocks. And like, of course, the underpass isn't far from where I live. So like recognizing that the impacts also aren't equitable. And so I'm wondering like how you take all of that into consideration, the cost and also the impacts. Because I know it's complex and you have to find something that's also workable for a for a city of our size.
Absolutely. Quite a few questions there.
I know.
The first one, when we do these utilities in the, from a fairness perspective, we try to treat everyone to the same level of service. Recognize that elevation, different flooding impacts can happen during stormwater events. That's where these master plans can then help get everyone to that same playing field. We're trying to get everyone better. So we try to treat fairness more from we provide the same level of service, therefore we can charge you a similar rate. However, and then in this case, we want the rate to be tied to impervious surface. There's been, if you recall that chart, I had a whole bunch of rates and you went to the really complex ones. There's been plenty of communities that have gone to the really complex ones and have backed off because they recognize that you get to almost the same answer by just doing the impervious surface calculation.
Okay.
It's not worth doing the extra steps. It becomes a data headache. You don't really create anything that's necessarily better, because it's still a model, right? We're still trying to predict how runoff happens on individual properties. Now, from a doing the improved service analysis, generally it's based on, I mean, this is going to be a technical, it's based on reflectivity of of ground. So concrete and buildings generally reflect most of it. Grass and things, you see the different color patterns, and you actually can start to get. If you get into the zero escape, start to see the in-between metric. So depending on the level we do the imagery, we could actually set up the structure to acknowledge that, that if you have semi-permeable zero escape things, there's a partial benefit or some benefit. So a lot of that is going to depend on the next step when we start to explore what that data looks like. For now, in our in our first cut, we basically said this is what a building footprint looks like. This is generally how much concrete driveway or paving space is also there and use that to start the analysis.
And then do you do cities that go this route, like reanalyze every certain number of years since development happens and people change their properties? Or how does that work?
The process is generally to try to redo the imagery every three to five years. And what we do then is look for outliers. If you had a property that did a big paving project, and maybe when I noticed you would see it in the outlier, if they change plus or minus five, ten percent. That's something to address. It's also one of those key steps was, they talked about trying to make this thing livable. So as new developments happening through public works and others, we're going to be doing the, set up the process to look at the plat reviews and assign them a fee on day one, say, you're planning to build this, this is what the associated stormwater fee is going to be. So you you try to, it's a two-part to keep it updated. I could realize its properties are being changed or developed through the plating process permitting. Tackle it then, and then redo the imagery every three to five years.
And then for like the part where people are impacted differently around town, because we have, you know, the ground is really different and the topography makes impacts really different for for stormwater runoff in Livingston, is that mostly addressed then by like how you prioritize projects?
That's the idea, is we're trying to target the most impacted areas first.
Okay.
And then try to get everyone to a similar level of service.
Okay. And then another question I have is in the report, there was talk of entering an agreement potentially with the ditch. Right, as a way for.
Yeah, okay, so. So.
I I really get into this. I'm not going to apologize about getting into it.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Yeah, well, this is like a good conversation, like, and I live in that part of town, it's right next to me, so, yeah.
So. Inherently, a lot of stormwater in Livingston, north of the ditch, ends up in the ditch. So. When I was, well, actually, when we started the stormwater P E R, was reaching out to other public works directors, and the city of Billings actually has quite a few
Right.
of agreements with ditch associations. And utilize that. So I see that as being a huge benefit for our residents if we memorialize an agreement. And it could it could save that part of town some money instead of having to pipe everything all the way across the tracks. Where we could get some relief from strong water north or upstream of the ditch.
Does it get treated before it goes into the ditch, or does the ditch get treated before it charges into the Yellowstone?
Our plan would be to treat the ditch no different than any receiving stream. So my plan would be that we would have a storm scepter and we would we would make sure that there wasn't any sand oil grits in that, because it's going to agricultural livestock uses, so.
So the idea is it would get pre-treated before going into the ditch instead of going all the way across the south side of town? Is that kind of what you're saying?
We, if we can memorialize this agreement, that really helps us put maybe smaller systems in for the whole length of the ditch through the city limit.
Rather than having to cross.
Then have to put in a whole network to bring it, you know,
Okay.
across the tracks.
Thank you, that's really.
To Fleishman Creek or the Yellowstone.
But it still gets treated the same as every other.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I appreciate it, June. The other, I I mean, I'm just like talking a lot now at this point or asking a question. So I'm just going to say the other thing, I think. Would be helpful. Is in the planning. Like, I like the idea of adding a map. I also, for the community engagement step, I think the community has been really clear, at least since I've been on the commission, about wanting really clear defined public engagement around public works projects since they're so impactful. So I think it would be helpful for the city, but also for the public. For all of us to have a really clear idea of what community engagement looks like as we move forward, rather than having it be sort of a vague thing that we'll figure it out when we get there, but like because this will impact all of us. I think that would I just think that would be really nice and really helpful for a project of this size moving forward, having that somewhat defined from, or iterative, where the community can like really give meaningful input on how they want to engage with the city around this. Thank you so much for answering all my questions, all of you. I yield.
Yeah.
Um, I just have a couple of quick questions. One, I'm curious about timeline. So you said like six to nine months for the developer. Did the feasibility study, and now you're saying, you know, it could be about six to nine months for the development plan. And then you feel like in six to nine months, if we followed it, then then maybe headed into implementation? Just kind of curious, like if you have an idea of, like, if we we got started right away, like, where are we then? What's, and maybe that's Mr. Gager, too, but whoever you say.
If you have some thoughts.
So I think, so the roadmap I showed feasibility study was kind of the first step. We're basically at the end of that
Yeah.
process. We think the development plan would take about six, nine months. So let's just say that was twenty twenty-five. And then the goal would be to potentially have bills going out sometime early twenty twenty-six would be a reasonable timeframe. That all is, you know, hanging on a number of policy discussions and continued, you know, support from you all that you want to keep moving forward through the process. So. One of the big things we have to do is acquire the impervious area data. Typically, you have to go through a third-party vendor for that, so that takes time. And then we'd have to analyze that data and get it to fit all the different properties. And then we want to QA to see work with the community, make sure everybody's comfortable, things are, as they kind of come together. So.
Yeah. I'm gonna ask Mr. Gager his thoughts on what he's thinking. No, I mean, it's not everything.
Yeah, no, certainly. You know, kind of depending on the the direction received tonight. I, you know, I I I think that we have the the capacity to to advance this over the next six to nine months, absolutely. So I would say, kind of depending where we are at the point of budget adoption. We may or may not, I may or may not have a recommendation, the manager's recommended budget that relates to this. And then also somewhat dependent on the service development plan, I think Jacob made a point that that was kind of minor, but actually is pretty critical about how this would be built, whether it would be built on utility bills with water, sewer and trash, or whether it would be an assessment that comes on the property tax bills. Be, that decision has some implications for the timing of implementation of the utility. Just because we control one of those, we don't control the other one. And so as we work through this process, I think I would have a much better idea by the time recommended budget about our time to the implementation. But much of that will come from the direction that I hear from the commission this evening.
Okay. And then the D N R C grant that you that you have listed here, that you, you know, were discussing, you know, potentially applying for that forty to fifty thousand dollars would be used for development plan?
That is, so there are, there are several tiers within the grant program. There is a lower tier for the development plan. And then there's a higher tier for actual capital work. I think just given where we are, it would probably be looking at the lower tier through that.
And then kind of piggybacking off of some of the questions that you asked, Vice Chair Newt. With it impervious data and impervious areas. So you're really looking at that more for commercial properties and that data is not necessarily used in the residential properties. Is that correct? Is that what I read in the report?
Yes, generally it'll be used to figure out the bills for the non-residential properties. But from a fairness perspective, we like to look at your residential properties as well, and then you set them to be equal. So if we're charging one square foot of impervious for commercial, we should charge the same for residential. We just average it out for residential because there's the properties are generally uniform. We're going to look at everybody. But in updates, it's really going to be geared around the non-residential properties.
Okay.
Good question.
But residential, if I have I'm gonna make up numbers now, a three thousand square foot lot and Vice Chair Newt has a ten thousand square foot lot. We're paying the same.
That was our general approach. If we get into this and we just realize we want to look at that, there's also, you can look at maybe two different builds based on property size. So that is an option. If that's something we want to go to. But again, with that, with, once we get into that data, I think there's a whole other discussion there about refining the
Yeah.
rate structure once we see it.
Just curious. Right. I think that's all my sort of clarifying questions. I know we kind of got a little off tracks. Um, any other clarifying questions or questions that are burning to ask right now? Enjoying this conversation, so thank you. So now, why don't we, I would entertain a motion. And then we can open up to public comment, if folks are comfortable with that.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the stormwater feasibility study and direct the city manager to pursue the recommendations in the study.
I have a motion by short, so have a second.
A second there.
Second by Willich, okay. So we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. So folks, feel free to make a public comment. We'll start in the room. Anyone in the room like to make a public comment? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and go online. Anyone online like to make a public comment? Feel free to come off mute and give us your name. Any public comment? Okay. One last time. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm going to say, why don't we take a break before we continue on? Does that work? Um, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for a ten-minute break.
Okay, I have a motion by Newt, so a second. I have a second by Will. Who got that?
No one finished it. All second.
Okay, a second by Lyons. We're going to go ahead and take a ten-minute break.
We can vote on it?
Oh, yes, we are. Go ahead. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hi. We will take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at six forty-eight. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, welcome back at six forty-eight. We're going to come back to our Livingston City Commission meeting. We had made a motion, we had opened it for public comment and closed public comment. And so commissioners, now we're at discussion deliberation. I think if we have any other question, any more questions or anything, this would be the appropriate time. Why don't I start at the end, Commissioner Willis, anything?
Yeah, actually, thank you very much for your hard work. It's awesome. It's comprehensive so far in its in the introductory stage, I guess. I know, at least through talking to the people in Livingston, as long as I have, that stormwater has been an issue and has come up quite a bit and more so as we approach our class one city status. So it is something that we have to look at. I also imagine there, there are a number of stakeholders beyond the city, users of the river, users, the F W P with fishing permits, blue water ribbon, the blue water ribbon, river, that's hard to say, status, et cetera. So I am interested in seeing what kind of novel funding features we can find to lessen the impact on the residents here. But we are, I guess, what, the only or the furthest upstream class one state city from water river. So it's kind of on us. And with that, I.
Thank you. Mr. Lance?
I'll start with one more question. The, in the packet, it talks about the potential for a forty to fifty K grant. But I don't recall hearing an estimation of what the the development plan itself would cost. So I'm curious about that.
That's a fantastic question that I might turn over to to the team that, you know, quite honestly, well, I haven't had those discussions with the team, not not knowing what the what the direction would be this evening. So I don't know if anyone from A to S or Headwaters feels prepared to opine on a rough order of tactics.
I can turn on that. A lot of it's going to depend on some of these key decisions. So when we get in and start scoping on it, we can start having discussions on, is it going to go to the billing system? Is it going to be tax rules? We're going to start the negotiations with the imagery to figure out what the aerial imagery is going to. We're gonna start the negotiations with the imagery to figure out what the aerial, uh, the imagery is gonna cost. That'll be baked into it. Our initial estimates when we start talking with the grammar, probably in the seventy to one hundred thousand dollar range, but it could definitely go. A little bit down or a little bit up as we get in and really scope it, but that's to give you kind of a rough number of what it's gonna take.
How much did this feasibility study cost?
I think we're at thirty, thirty thousand.
Um, that's it for the question. Thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll share Commissioner Willich's sentiment on kind of. Our responsibility steward stewards of the river. Um, I think that that's. A sentiment that's like pretty ubiquitously shared in in our community. Um. I think that there's. Another kind of responsibility that we hold as uh as a commission is to be prudent with. The public resources and. Um, it's. It it's probably not, it's probably, it probably is easily lost on books that we're considering a move of. Charging for stormwater as a, as a prudent move, um, because if we fail to do so in a, in a way that. Involved rigorous planning like this, we could come up um against some serious consequences with the state. So um. I I think that, you know, that's an important consideration that that lends um to a decision of continuing this planning process. Um. Yeah, I think those are kind of the two main points that that I'm thinking about and uh I think that they make. Um. Make it clear that it it's advisable to continue on the. Uh, on the road that's been depicted for us here and not uh bailing off on the the first fork, so. Uh, while you open up.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Um. I couldn't say it any better than you guys did, uh, being stewards. Um, of Yellowstone and, you know, once again, what a nice report to read, you know, in an afternoon. And and understandable. Um, I was looking at when I, I initially looked at approach number three. The previous area plus. And after listening. Um, everything you guys had to say, I can see where that would. That'd be hard. It just, you know, from a. Geography standpoint, stuff, you know, and undeveloped piece of land, you know, somebody owns and or undevelopable even at that, you know. Um, I can see where we could really get in the weeds on something like that, whereas approach the previous area period, well, you know. Standalone does make a. A lot more sense. Um, with that. Um, fifteen to twenty years can, will go by real quick. Um, but um, if if not sooner on the projected um growth. Of Livingston. It was nice that we're being proactive at this point. Um, because it's only gonna get more expensive. I'd, I'd rather deal with this, you know, and. Small amounts and a big bill at the end, I mean. Far too long, you know, many things have been put off. In this town, you know, infrastructure wise, stuff like that. So it's nice to see that's getting ahead, something and uh and doing it now. So, um. Shannon, you guys, everybody, what a, what a great, great piece of work and uh I look forward to seeing this move forward. I yield.
Thank you. Vice Chair Newt.
I generally am in support of this. I already said my thoughts on how I think it's a really nice report. Um. There's a couple of things I would hope to see. One is the, a more refined community engagement plan, like I said, but it beyond just surveys. Right? Like, so not just sending out surveys to the public, but something maybe a little more creative. Which I feel based on what I'm seeing here, that perhaps you all have ideas. We haven't considered in this town. Um, and. I actually am interested in more refinement around residential properties, just thinking about how we have some lots in town, some property owners that own. You know. Land large enough to graze animals on in town to. People that live in mobile homes on lots. And so I think it is an equity issue if everyone's paying the same when. You know, there's. Things that are zone residential, that's basically like the ridge, right? The whole ridge line. So if that person's paying the same as like. Someone that lives on the north side in a mobile home, um. It seems like maybe we could do a little bit more refinement there to get at something that feels a little bit more equitable across the city. I don't know what that looks like, um, but I'm, I'm interested in having that conversation. Also, as more apartment buildings are likely to be built in Livingston, like what does that look like is, you know. A hundred and fifty people in a, in a subdivision apartment complex gonna be paying the same. As like one person in a trailer, like that, that's the kind of thing I'm thinking if it's like, how are we counting development and. And accounting for that, knowing that they have different impacts. So. Um, I'm interested in that conversation. I'm also interested in perhaps. Getting some public input as well on like, I I'm interested in what other communities do for billing on property tax versus billing. Like on a monthly bill, but I'm also interested in what our public wants, you know, like how would our public want to be paying for that? Um. And like what's more nimble, like what's, I think it's, they're probably both pretty nimble for the city to do. But like what's practical from the city staff perspective as well? Those are the things I'd like to see more of as we move the conversation forward personally. That's it, video.
Thank you. Um, I would agree with you, Vice Chair Newt, um, just on the. Lot size. Impermeable surfaces, you know, like. Obviously, we can't make it too hard because then it's just gonna be so ridiculous to try to figure it out that it, we're gonna pay more staffing than we will to. Get it right, but I think that there is. It'd be nice to kind of dig into that a little bit deeper and learn a little bit more. Um, love the idea of um. Creative public outreach. I think we've done a lot of. We've been doing a lot of public outreach la- lately and that's great. But, you know, I think because we've been doing so much, it might be good to look at some different options to get people excited, you know, to learn things or. Come out and learn more. Um. And I get the people, I, and you know, every time we raise rates, we hear people get upset and I understand that and. Um, but if we don't plan ahead. You know, maybe it's not a few of us sitting at this table that are gonna pay it, but somebody else is gonna pay it down the line and it's gonna be a big deal. Um, or at some point, we're all gonna be on fixed incomes that are sent up here trying to pay and won't be able to do it either. So. Um, I think that, you know, we need, we need to start now. Um. This is just a little sidebar, but I'd love to see the city. Not allow people to pave their boulevards. And I say that only because we bought a house on a corner and all of our boulevards were paved. Um, so it's, and it's a big deal, like, that'd be really expensive for me to try to break all that concrete up and. Get a backhoe and move, you know, like, so I think to think about that, I don't know how that ever happened in the first place and. So it's, you know, maybe something to think about, just boulevards and the way that water can soak into a boulevard and it's not paved would be um something to think about. Um. Um, because I'm sure there's other places. Or someone might ask to do it, I don't know. Um, so that would be something. Time wise, timeline wise, just kind of thinking, so just let's say, okay. I think we had mentioned, like, potentially, we could have bills going out in twenty twenty six. What does that mean? What does, what does um? What does the service look like at that point? Are we just starting some capital, some of the initial capital improvement projects in twenty twenty six? Because now we're collecting money to do that. Have we already done some and now we're paying them back? Just kind of curious at what that might look like.
So, um, and I, I, I welcome the, the. Team from Public Works to to add to my comments if I happen to miss anything, but my uh recollection from our initial conversations is. Um, some of the, the initial work actually would probably likely not be capital unless we had some sort of bond or or loan situation in place. For the capital projects, we would take a few years and accrue some of that revenue and a lot of the initial work action might be more on the operational side. Um, making sure that our lines are clean, uh, making sure that the infrastructure that we do have in place is functioning in a, in a proper way. Uh, and that's why, that's why we would bring on that um employee and also support them with the, the sweeper in the back truck. So that they can go and make sure some of that operational work is happening while we build up funds. Uh, and do the engineering for some of these capital projects. Have I summarized that correctly?
I just want to remind, so that's all great. And I, you know, I think. Obviously, the receiving facility is gonna be huge. That will give us a very safe, um. EPA compliance, so we'll be able to, when we back out storm drain inlets, we will have a place. So they will dry out, we can process the water at the wastewater facility, get rid of the solids. So that's important. Um, the commission did commit and we're moving forward with the Montana Street Project. I'd hate to spend four million dollars and not put stormwater infrastructure in for that. So MDT is committed to putting in the inlets, but the city will be responsible for the actual collection main. For that, so that'll be, you know, on that twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight timeframe. And then, you know, another big one is, is we develop our downtown and and finish our capital projects. We really have a pinch point in the second street stormwater system. So right now, everything above Lewis Street. Is fifteen or eighteen inches and then it goes into a twelve inch line. So there's, so we'd like to be able to take that all the way to the outfall and and put a storm scepter in. So we do have some capital projects that. Um, I think are, you know, a priority and um regardless if we have the utility or not, we're gonna have to come up with a way to fund. Fund some of those.
Thank you. I think that's all I have. Um, you all have said a lot of what I would have said too. So, thank you. Um, again, great report. Nice presentation, easily read. Thank you so much for that. Um, and any other, anything else, commissioners? All right, well, why don't we go ahead and vote on that motion, Mr. Gager, roll call please?
Chair Hill.
Or.
Vice Chair Newt. Or Commissioner Schwartz. Or Commissioner Lyons. Or Commissioner Willish. Or.
Well, she carries. Thank you all. Sorry, folks, let me just get to the proper page. All right. I've been looking forward to reading this. This action item all afternoon. Ready for this? You'll hear it, you'll hear it. Resolution fifty one fifty one, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, accepting. Utility and access easement granted by Vegan Tri-Tip for the North Town Subdivision Project Phases Two and Three. And authorizing city manager to sign a pursuant document. I love that the LLC is vegan tri-tip.
That's the highlight of the day.
Good sense of humor, I'm just saying. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Hill. The item before you this evening is the acceptance of uh several easements. Uh, these easements were thought to have been accepted several years ago, um, back in twenty twenty one. However, as the North Town team, um progressives in their project, it became clear to them and also vegan tri-tip. That uh that none of these easements had previously been granted to the city or recorded, uh, more importantly. And so uh we are uh this evening taking a bit of a cleanup step as it pertains to the North Town subdivision. And so with that, I will stand for any questions that these folks may have.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner's clarifying questions. Mr. Lyons.
Uh, my understanding, Mr. Gager, is that the proposed. Easements that we're looking at tonight are the same alignment. As what we thought had been recorded previously. Have there been any changes to to the easement?
No, sir. Uh, these easements are as were previously contemplated during the approval process. Great, thank you.
Any other questions, clarifying questions?
All right. Yeah.
Yes.
So this document that's in here. It's within fifty one fifty one?
There are two documents within fifty one fifty one, yes.
So the public utility and access easement and agreement. From twenty twenty one. Right?
On page.
One ninety, one ninety one.
So the, the first um easement is on page one eighty eight, which is the public utility and access agreement. And then on page one ninety three, there's the grant of the stormwater sewer easement. So there are two easements that are being. Provided and the city will record.
Um. Just. Like names have changed, so will these just get updated? To current staff?
Yes.
For example?
Yes, and and so uh again, to to Commissioner Lyons is some kind of question, these were presented. Uh, or are being presented to you as they were drafted several years ago.
Right.
And um, as you may recall. From the recent changes that we made to chapter two of the Livingston Municipal Code, the city clerk is empowered to make. Uh, minor changes such as. And other, you know.
Like names, like, put in the current manager, for example. Great. I just wanted to be a part of this and that thing, that's all.
And then I would just. Also, within that, the old city hall addresses, you know, I'm saying, though, I'm sure she'll make that. Those adjustments too. All right. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution fifty one fifty one and authorize the chair to sign.
I have a motion by lines of a second.
Second.
Second by Willich. Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Anyone in the room? Okay, no one in the room? Uh, anyone online? Would anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to come off mute. Give us your name. Uh, ask one more time. Have a comment. Being none. Go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners deliberation, discussion.
I still have a question. Um. This is a long time ago. Do we have better processes in place so that we won't miss things for three years moving forward?
Yes, absolutely. As part of our uh approval and entitlement processes. Um, we run easements through a different process than we previously had. And so um actually, at the um. A forthcoming meeting, uh, we expect that a final plat for a subdivision uh will be approved. And at that time of final plat approval, we will also seek approval of all of the easements. Um, and uh open space operating and management requirements that are part of conditions. Uh, of approval of the commission. And so the, the goal is to bring an entire package forward at the time of final plat approval. So instances like this don't occur again.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
Yeah, I just assumed that that was the process to begin with.
I, yeah, I.
It's tough to understand why this didn't happen.
Yes. I have to ask. Who or what is vegan tri-tip?
Um, it is sometimes referred to, well, so the area is sometimes referred to as the birdhouses. If one is driving um. Out. And where the North Town subdivision is on the right side of scenic trail. On the left side, there is a small triangle that has some tall and skinny houses. That is the area known as the vegan tri-tip. Was originally part of the North Town subdivision, um, but the North Town folks uh divested of that to vegan tri-tip. Um, and they're the actual ones who developed that.
Okay, all righty.
We've got several city employees that that live in that development. It is a rather affordable development on that area now.
All right. Anything else? All right, uh, let's go ahead and vote on that motion, Mr. Gager, roll call please.
Chair Kels.
Or.
Vice Chair Newt.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz. For Commissioner Lyons. Or Commissioner Wilkes.
All right, action item D. So this is a discussion and direction to staff regarding update to subdivision regulations, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Hill. The item before you is, um, what we believe is introducing, uh, the start of a process that will lead to the. Update of the city's subdivision regulations, as noted in the staff report. Subdivision regulations were adopted in two thousand and seven. Uh, however, there have been, uh, several changes since two thousand and seven, including the twenty twenty one adoption of the, uh, updated growth policy. Which included certain recommendations for, uh, modifications to the subdivision regulations. And those, um, are, uh, included in, uh, in, in the attachments to the, um. To the, to the staff report. Additionally, in the most recent legislative session in twenty twenty three. The state legislature enacted certain land use related bills, including four, which impacted subdivision approvals. Um, and, and specifically with, uh, regard to phased subdivisions, um, and minor subdivisions, um, specifically. And so, uh, as part of the ongoing implementation of the growth policy. Um, you may recall that almost a year ago, uh, I, I pointed out that a review of the subdivision regulations. Um, would, uh, be on our work plan along with an update of the zoning, um, provisions of the Livingston Municipal Code. And so, uh, while we recently kicked off the update to the zoning, um, provisions. We also thought that now is a, a good time for us to revisit the subdivision regulations. Because, uh, we do expect that this will be, um, a, a bit of a process. As you can see, the subdivision regulations were approximately a hundred or so pages. Um, and, and there's, there's quite a bit to, to update and receive public feedback on. And so, um, before we kick that process off, uh, I wanted to, um, hear from the commission. Um, any thoughts that you folks had, considerations that you have, that you would like staff, um, to pay attention to. Uh, as we, uh, engage in this, uh, this update, we do have, um. Because it is such a, a long process, we have started on, on the update. We do have a draft that incorporates the. Um, the regulatory changes made by the legislature as well as, uh, many of the, the requested changes in the, in the growth policy. But that said, um, we are, uh, certainly not finished with that draft. Uh, we expect that to, to present that to you at the next meeting. And so, um, before we do that, wanted to, uh, just affirm and, and find out if there are any, um, specific. Items of concern for the commission as we embark on this process.
So let me ask you this, what are you looking, just so that we know? To be specific, what are you looking for us? What are you looking to get from us this semester, Mr. Gager? What do you?
Um, I, you know, I, there's, there's probably several buckets. Uh, if there are any existing concerns that commissioners have with the subdivision regulations that are not otherwise covered by, uh, legislative mandates. Or growth policy recommendations, uh, I, I think now would be an appropriate time to. Let staff know of those. Um, if there are, uh, any, any other ideas, perhaps. That, um, were not embodied in those recommendations within the growth policy that, uh, you folks have heard from your constituents in the, the. Three year, three and a half years since the growth policy was adopted, we'd certainly welcome those. Um, or, or, you know, any other, uh, general thoughts, concerns, ideas that the commission may have. Uh, really, any genesis, we, we'd appreciate that input as well.
Okay, so we're just giving you some thoughts and ideas this evening. There's no motion. Um, or just, or decision, okay?
Go for it. Yeah, sounds good.
Well, how about?
I haven't digested this whole thing and stuff and. Yeah, I yield. I don't know where to start.
Commissioner Lyons, do anything?
Yeah, I'm happy to start.
Go for it.
Um. I would like to start with. Some gratitude. When I looked at this. My first thought was, dang, I'm gonna have to go onto the website and find the subdivision regulations and then find the growth policy. And my computer's gonna run slowly having those huge documents open. And, uh, it was immensely helpful to have those things as attachments in the agenda, immensely helpful. To the point where. I realized, why are those things not attachments anytime that we make land use decisions? Because that's, that, that's. A thing that we all have to do independently as commissioners. And I'm sure even some well-informed public have to do that. So having those, like, necessary tools. Um, that inform those decisions would be like a wonderful thing to add to any agenda where we're making that use decision. Uh, it was hugely helpful today, tonight. Um, and I really appreciate it. And I think that that's a best practice that we should, um, continue to do for. It seems to me. Like you have some pretty fantastic direction from the growth policy. Albeit quite comprehensive. Um, for at least the most recent. Major public engagement exercise around, kind of this topic. My assessment. Is that. When I go through that, nothing seems out of line to me from my current understanding of the will of the electorate. I also understand, like, as you're drafting policy, sometimes a recommendation that's in the, in the growth policy. Uh, might not be like, as even one recommendation might be a lot more, a lot easier to implement than another. Um, and so, I think. My baseline. Preference is that all of that that's in the growth policy makes an end to an update for, um, the subdivision regulation update. But I do understand that, again. One recommendation might be easier than another to implement. Um. I think that something that. That that brings up is. How we might go about doing this most efficiently for our time and for the public's time. And. What do we feel in terms of. Urgency. To get this updated versus doing it as thoroughly and carefully as possible. I think that's a debate that we have on this table like quite often. Um. And I don't, I don't necessarily feel like I have, uh, a, a feeling on that right now. I mean. I would hope, as you know, this growth policy has been around for, for some time now, that. You've had like good time and direction to, to, to figure out how to implement, um, those recommendations. Um, the, the state bills, you know, happened more recently. Um. And there's probably some. Um. Stat, like statutory requirement as to like when our code reflects, um, those changes to state policy. Um. You know, I trust, I trust your executive expertise on, on finding those balances. Um. Yeah, I like, when I, when, when I got to revisit the growth policy, I just kept saying, yes, yes. Oh, and that, and that. Um, so, you know, I think that there. There are certain, uh, recommendations that stand out to me. Um. But. But also, we could probably all. Pick our own five and then we'd cover most of them. So I don't know how useful it would be for me to, to share which ones get me most excited. Um. But. Uh, I don't know how, how much definitive direction you're opting out to me, but, um. I feel like I've spoken for my share enough. Uh, you.
Thank you.
Here's what you said.
Okay.
Serious, I mean, I mean, that's a lot on.
Yes.
On staff here, there's a lot. You know, to. To go through, so. I really, really trust the professionals. Thank you.
Mr. Willis?
Yeah, I don't know if I have anything hard and fast as far as like, this is the direction I want to impart into your decision-making process. Other than. The process has started. And now we are going to see it through. So. That's the only. I guess. Impetus that I have to, to impart is that. We get started and we finish with getting this thing. Codified into our, our laws. So now we have these tools for us to use, so. Uh, yeah, that's, that's great. And actually, I was just looking through this real quick because it was something that I worked on a long, long time ago. And maybe it isn't in the growth policy. I don't know why it wouldn't be, but I don't see anything in here for night sky protection.
Yeah, it's, is it in the?
The, uh. I know it's. Twenty something or other, twenty seven or.
Oh, I, I just read it two seconds ago, so it is in here.
It is in it?
Yeah.
All right. Then I'll take your, I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, please do. I, I think it's on page ninety two, uh. The growth policy here. But, yeah. No call of the sex, uh, the, the. I know, so.
So it does appear at the top of page ninety two, which is packet page three hundred and twenty-three.
Um.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
There it is, I see it, yeah. Chapter eighteen.
Is that actually part of the?
Yeah, I was gonna say, actually, so that, that was, um, relates to just larger, um, Livingston Municipal Code.
Period. Uh, that, I mean, that goes without saying. It's part of, you know. Yeah. Okay, cause that's been adopted, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
How to enforce it, that's a whole other thing. We should find ways to enforce it, yeah. I yield.
Sure, Kim, I.
Yep.
I, I just thought of kind of how I can synthesize my. I think that we would be. Coming as close, I think we would be. Making true on our promises. If. These. Next. Version of updated subdivision regulations can as close to as possible to the recommendations that are clearly stated in the. Like, i- if, if what you bring to us is as close as is practical, practicable. That would be us, um, following through on, on our promise. Um, and I think that. Most of us here would, would feel really good if we could, um, you know, tell our constituents that we have followed through on that process. Uh, in, on those promises and, and our subdivision regulations are now very closely aligned. What was recommended. So, like, to me, you have a really clear blueprint here. And the closest you, you can get to lining up to that blueprint, that's the metric of success to me. That's amazing.
Thank you. Questionnaires?
Uh, yeah. I. Would say that I think the goal of the subdivision regulations is to try to get. The staff recommendations coming to us as close to what the public wants is possible. So there's the fewest conditions that we need to add. Like the fewest number of conditions and. The greatest chance of like public acceptance since the legislature is moving or state government is moving towards, um. The executives making decisions as opposed to legislators making decisions about land use law.
Mm-hmm.
So I actually appreciate the recommendations, but I think some of the language needs to be stronger, so, um. For some of the items on the list, so like. There are some things I think we need to do better in Livingston, and I'd say trail connections is one of them. Um, some of the language, I think it's a little weak about explore boulevard tree plantings or explore. Water course and wetland setbacks. I'd like to see some real policy around some of these things and like, let's make some decisions and make it definitive. Where we want wetland setbacks and where we don't. Um. Uh, this language about like investigate updating regulations to consider lifetime cost to taxpayer, greenhouse gas emissions, water use. Coordination of project work to reduce disruption. I don't think we should investigate that. I think we should like make some decisions about it. Um, we've seen some pretty serious disruptions to our community based on the lack of coordination project work. Um. Also, water use reduction, we literally were just having a whole conversation about stormwater. So it would be nice if we could start getting subdivision regulations in line with our goals for reducing impacts to a potential future. Stormwater utility, um, greenhouse gas emissions. We're also working on energy action plan. And certain forms of energy are pretty volatile and expensive. I E methane, um, so it would be nice if we were thinking about the long-term. Cost impacts to our community by what we're requiring in our subdivisions. Um, particularly is some large plots of land. You know, could, could be developed in Livingston. Um, require gridded streets that promote active transportation. Uh, again, I would like, I think. I think we should be thinking more, um. Distinctively, not just like promoting active transportation, but like, what are we actually doing to help reach those goals? I know we have an active transportation plan. So I'm thinking when this was written, there were a whole bunch of plans that had not yet been completed in Livingston. Active transportation plan, energy action plan. Um, we weren't yet a B city, right? Like, all of these things have happened since we passed the growth policy. But we don't really have anything on zero escaping in here. But that came up tonight in the conversation with, um. About stormwater. So like, are we gonna promote zero escaping and like pollinator friendly planting in Livingston? Cause it's good for B city USA. It's good for, um, reduced water. It's good for groundwater absorption, like absorption of rainwater and stormwater into the ground instead of going into the systems. Like, what are we doing? Not as like an optional, but what are we requiring of developers to help reach our community goals that will also keep costs down for taxpayers? Um. The impact, like, again, it says, consider reducing the impact streets have on water runoff. If we're talking about stormwater utility now, which again, we weren't quite there with this growth policy. Can we make that stronger to support a future stormwater utility? Right? Like, are there things we can be proactive with here to help reach goals? Cause we've done a lot of things, um. Since it was, was written, where we could strengthen this language. Um. Let's see. Uh, consider requiring parkland dedication first and payment in lieu of parkland as second option approved by commissions. I would say. You know, particularly, I put a note in here, what I put, particularly infrastructure development and completion, like roads, water, sewer, boulevards, so like. I think what I'm getting at is like. Um. Not all those things have always been quite completed, right? So like, how are we thinking of it altogether? As a package? Does that make sense, what I'm saying? Um. And then I'm concerned about the, this little line about communities often shy away from mobile homes, so. That's a topic worth reviewing. We have a lot of people in our community that live in mobile homes and it is affordable housing. Um, in a place like Livingston, so I think that we should. Think in a really inclusive way when we're thinking about subdivisions and I think some of that's gonna happen with the zone. The zoning update anyway. Uh, some other things, I think that this didn't really. I think we have an opportunity, I should say, with the wild land urban interface. That's something that comes up a lot. And I don't think we've really highlighted the solutions around that. So I would like to see that in subdivision requirements. Like, what does that mean? As we're developing, um, you know, is, is. Is fire conflict is growing higher in Montana as well as, um, wildlife conflict. You know. Even on the north side, we get bears, so like. What does that look like and what are some good decisions? So we're not having to make decisions about fences or trashcans on the fly, but do we have some good things in place? Um. To help make it cleaner. Um, also, I would say HOAs. I think we, I'm concerned that HOAs can come in and be more restrictive than the city. Um, or that they can, HOAs can have. Policies that are in conflict with the intent of City of Livingston codes. I think that the commission should be setting the policy for a community based on public input and not a developer. Um. Overriding public, what the public wants in policy in their neighborhoods. Um, cause I think they've, we've seen things like restrictions on pets. Changes, you know, in design standards, changes in requirements on garages, plantings, plantings that conflicted with what the city says we can plant. You know, the city staff say, the arborists say we can plant. So I, I really think that would be good to have that cleaned up, so we don't have. You know, weird inequities happening across town through HOA processes, um. And. The other thing that has come up that we don't get at in subdivision regulations are. I mentioned wildland and wildlife, but riparian area interface, so right, like the stuff by the river, that part, those neighborhoods are very, very different than uphill on the north side, so are we thinking differently about how that's developed on those wildlife corridors or where it's more likely to flood? And also. Impacts from the railroad have been an issue where um we shouldn't negate the impacts of the railroad because we know there's a real. It's a different level of risk living within a certain distance of the railroad, so. Um, one of the things we've talked about in subdivisions is like sound and um. Noise and like safety issues. So are we? As we move towards administrative, um, this becoming like a more administrative function than legislative, I just want to make sure we're. We're including all of those community needs, and this is stuff that I've seen come up in meetings that have. People have wanted to stop subdivisions based on these things or had safety concerns that weren't addressed, so if there's a way to like. Address some of that. That was a lot again, but.
I appreciate it. It's incredibly helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I yield. Okay, um, but I also want to say like plus plus to everything that Commissioner Lyon said, like. I agree with all that, if we can get close, but I think we can do even a little stronger because we've passed a lot since we initially passed the growth policy, we've I think we can.
We've gone above.
Yeah, I think I think we can give more teeth to our subdivision. I'm hoping we can get more teeth to our subdivision regulations so that like. My greatest um hope for the city would be that when we get a list of conditions from the staff or we get like what staff approves and. Um, doesn't approve from a developer that it's totally in line with what the commission would say, that there's very few like disagreements between our branches of government, that's like. Yeah.
Why are you doing this?
Yeah, so taking out the wishy-washy bits and making it stronger is what I would do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Now I'm really done, thanks.
Okay, so. I'm gonna probably hit on a few several of the things that you hit on as well and kind of maybe say it a little differently. And I would say just. Vice turn news kind of heading off what you just said was, I would love it if. Our subdivision regulations are strong enough that by the there. By the developer going through through preapproval. There's not as many conditions, we're not getting conditions from the staff because the staff has said, well. You don't meet our recommenda- you know, you don't meet the subdivision regulation, so you through preapproval, we're going to have people there so that we're not having to be so. Nitpicky and digging so deeply into these. Applications, right? Because in preapproval, this was all sorted out already. Yes, to the growth policy, yes, everything that the Commissioner Lyon said. Um, but we've also seen some things happen in our community since the approval of the growth policy, one being a giant flood, right? And some other things, so. Um, Mr. Gager, I would really love it, uh, Montana F W P has a sub- has a subdivision. Recommendation document. Would love if the planning department would have a look at that within that it talks about as um. Vice turn news talks about bodies of water. Of all different kinds. Um, it talks about setbacks and buffers, what's appropriate, what they recommend, and I think that there could be some really good information in there. And I would love it if the planning department would look at that and consider some of that in these subdivision regulations. So I think that that would be a good place to start. It talks about wetlands as well and what some of their recommendations are about building setbacks, buffers, all all of the things. The other thing is. We have just had brand new channel migration mappings come out. Um, I would love it. I know that coming up in the next several months, I think we're going to get a presentation on those on that, and it will. Uh, teach us how to how to use that and get into the library, the Montana library site to to use that. Um, within the F W P recommendations, they talk about the channel migration mapping from channel migration zones and looking at that. And so I'd love to see if we can include that in the subdivision regulations by looking at those to make determinations. Wildlife, again, we have. I think in every subdivision. That we have approved. Or looked at, we have made a condition to add veraport trashcans. I would like that to just be part of the subdivision regulations, that that would be a requirement. And again, in those F W P regulations, there's some some language about that. In wildlife, just to look at wildlife, whether it's migrating wildlife and its fencing requirements or. Um, the ways in which we can do fencing that's appropriate for wildlife. Um, obviously, we're growing, we're doing subdivisions. At this point, we're growing out into areas where. Wildlife is migrating, and so we might as well make sure we have that in place. Um, as well. Um, and it is a growth policy does touch on wildlife. Vice turn news, you mentioned it, and I had written it down to the wildland urban interface. What do we need to do about that? What are some regulations we need to put in place so that we're making sure that we're building safely? We've already heard, I've already heard that, you know, there's. Folks in the county that are not being able to get insurance on their homes because of wildfire. So let's make sure that we have things in place. In our town that are protecting for that. So it would be really great to be able to to figure that out um. As well. I think that those are my main topics. I mean, touch on a lot of things too, so thank you very much. Um, but I think that those would be some of the places to start. I'm also curious about what the. Mr. Gager, what the process. Looks like to move this forward? What are you envisioning in the process of? Updating these subdivision regulations? Does this go to the? Consolidated land use board first? Does it come to us? Like, what what is that process looking like?
Uh, fantastic question, your your final one about the process. Um, because subdivision regulations do not sit within uh chapter thirty of the Livingston municipal code, they're not required to go into the consolidated land use process. Um, and and that said. Because of the just the the magnitude of the document itself at a hundred pages or so, um, I I I don't expect. That um we would ask the commission to. Uh, review and approve new subdivision regulations in one meeting. My my expectation would be that at the next meeting, uh, we would provide you folks a draft. Um, that has, uh, you know, kind of an annotated draft that describes why we're making each change tied to a, you know, either a legislative change or a recommendation of the growth policy. Um, for uh for review and and possible action at the second meeting, which would be then in January, um, at the earliest. Um, and somewhat dependent upon um the level of of desired changes uh from the commission would would draft we bring you as well as what we hear from public. Um, in in that review as well. Um, so I I think. Next meeting would be a little bit of, um, you know, I I don't want to call it a work session, but it would be at least a presentation of of a draft. Uh, we have been working on this for the the better part of the calendar year, uh, because it is such a complex document, and and so I think it really does kind of deserve that, you know. Uh, amount of public goodwill, commissioner view, so that's what we are thinking, and and that said, um. You know, there are also uh some of these recommendations and and Vice Chair Nudes pointed out one uh relating uh to mobile homes. Um, that's. You know, I uh for one, probably are are better dealt with within um the zoning code, and so there are some things that that might not appear appear in the subdivision regulations for certain reasons like that. There are also some. Uh, some technical um. Uh, changes that are there requested, including consider removing professional land surveyor and having all plans certified by a professional engineer. Um, there's just really just different requirements of what different professions can certify, and so um not all recommendations actually are technically or legally feasible. Um, and and so uh we will also point out where some of those uh changes were not made and and what the justification was for that.
Thank you. Yes. Mr. Lyons.
Can I ask you a quick question just on what he was?
Yes.
I I think that would be. I just want to kind of. Highlight, you you were talking about. Explaining. What was feasible and what wasn't? If if that could be done for like every one of those recommendations, that would be fantastic. That's all I. Didn't, I don't want to interrupt, but I just thought that that would be.
Thank you.
You want justification?
I did. We have, sorry, not to interrupt, we have a draft of that document, so that was. Awesome, good job.
Vice turn it.
I was just thinking, when we. Went through the growth policy, there were like. Ways for people to give um. Feedback that wasn't like a survey, but it was just sort of like a portal where people could just give comments to staff. Um, and then there was like a document that we had with all the comments, so we could see what the public was saying. And. I wonder if. Staff is considering some sort of open format like that. To allow people to give. Flexible input. That. We might not have considered or staff might not have considered around subdivision regulations specifically because this is such a huge part of the growth policy. In terms of impacts. I mean, other than like just send an email to. Whatever. At Livingston, Montana, yeah.
A- absolutely, we uh expected actually after the next meeting when the draft is presented that we will open up such a portal and allow folks to. Give us their recommendations.
Great, thanks.
Miss, there's anything else? Mr. Gager, did anything? Any questions for us? Anything else to?
No, that was that was very helpful, although I I'll just I'll note that um. Landing Director Severson is on the line, and so Jen, I just. Give you the opportunity, if if there was anything that you heard this evening that you'd like clarification on or uh anything like that, please feel free to come along with you and and let us know.
Um, yeah, hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, thank you. No, um, Grant, I noted you were actually writing down a lot of this, and um I heard. The whole discussion, um, so yeah, I I don't think I have any questions about um. Direction, I'm I'm sure Grant has some ideas on how um. Beyond a portal, maybe we can we can um. Garner feedback and 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 suggestions from the public. Um, on on things we may not have considered or that have come up. And as as uh City Manager Gazer also told you. Uh, we do have a document, we 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 fully intend to sort of go. Through each of the. Recommendations as they're listed in the growth policy and explain. Where we address this or if we did not, if we could not, um, why we did not, um, and so we we definitely want to make it as transparent as possible. Um, so that you kind of know where we. Were coming from when we bring you that draft. That's all I got.
Thanks, Jen. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. So we will move on to um our last um action item, which is a closed session. Um, so I will make a motion here in just a moment, um, but just to inform the public, we'll be going into a closed session for legal strategies. You will be put into a waiting room. Um, while we're in closed session, when the closed session is over, we'll bring you out of the waiting room, um, and then we will uh. Finish the meeting with city manager comments and commissioner comments. Um, and so first I will uh make I will make the motion uh to go into closed session to discuss legal strategy pursuant to M C A two dash three dash. Two zero three four A, do you have a second?
A second.
On a second minute on favor.
All right.
Motion carried. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go into closed session. Um, close at the doors. Right, thank you. Uh, so we're coming back out of closed session, it is eight twenty three. Uh, we'll continue on down the agenda with uh city manager comments, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kill. I appreciate the commission's time and would remind everybody that the uh downtown Livingston Historic Strolls this Friday evening, so I will look forward to seeing you out there. Enjoy the light up Livingston fest on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Willich.
I have nothing to add. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lyons.
Uh, just and want to. Say thanks for the fact that we're. Making some tangible progress uh towards implementing growth policy via. Uh, the zoning code update and the subdivision regulations update, uh, it's. Incredibly important work, and it's just um. Really, really glad to see progress there, and I can't wait to. Continue to um. Really have our code reflect our growth policy, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz.
I did attend the tree lighting, got there right there when Grant was counting it down, and uh it was well attended and uh and. Downtown seemed to be quite lively, the establishments I looked into. So it was nice. Beautiful night, so. And I will attend the stroll this Friday as well. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Vice turn news.
Good night.
Night, thank you. Um, I would just like to say thank the the city. City manager and the city staff for all the work they've done, the reports we got tonight were really great. Looking forward to seeing the update of the growth policy or the subdivision regulations and. Getting all the things in the growth policy, and that is really amazing. Um, so very proud of our staff. So thank you very much. Um, with that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Uh, with that, this um meeting of Livingston City Commission is adjourned at eight twenty five P M. Thank you and good night.